Like to call this meeting the Sholo City Council to order, show that all council members are present with the acceptance of Councilman Adams who has to be excused tonight. Tonight I've asked Councilman Clark to lead us in the invocation followed by the pledge by the Vice Mayor Kakavas. If you'd all like to stand and join us, you may.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this opportunity we have to gather tonight as the City Council for the City of Sholo. Thankful for the opportunity we have to gather in this wonderful building in this peaceful times. We're thankful for the moisture that has fallen upon our land and we have received an abundance, truly beautified our community and our area and our mountains, and we are thankful for it. We're thankful, Father, for the men and women who put their lives on the line for our community and for our country. We pray that thou protect and watch over them, keep them safe, help them to make it home safely. We are thankful for this community, for the people who sacrificed their time and their talents and their efforts to make this a better place to live and to be a place that people would love to call home. We ask that tonight as we deliberate and as we discuss that we'll be able to do so in a, in a kind and efficient manner, that we will be able to think about the things, think about the citizens' needs and think about the impact they will have on the individuals whose these decisions will ultimately affect. We pray for guidance beyond our own and we ask for humility as we serve thee in our capacity as council members. We are grateful for our staff and for those people who've worked so hard to put the agenda together. We pray thou bless them and bless us this night to be guided and directed by thee and we ask this in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Clark. Appreciate that. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Alrighty, next item on the agenda is call the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city may do so at this time. Seeing nobody sprint up here, I will move to the next item. Next item under special events is presentation of a certificate appreciation to an outgoing member of the Planning and Zoning Commissioner, Mr. Trias.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Now, this is my first time that I've been asked to do this.
It's not gonna be your last.
Well, I'm afraid it won't be. We value our members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We value the service that they provide. Several of you on the council have had experience with the Planning and Zoning Commission and understand what all that can entail. In many ways, it's a thankless job. At this point, we'd like to recognize our outgoing Chair, Mr. Rob Hefner. He served on the commission for a period of approximately three years. Served as Chair for around the last year or so. In doing so, I think it's fair to say that he literally was my right-hand man. For those who are familiar with the way the commission sits, the Chair sits where Councilman Alsop is sitting now, and I sit where Mr. Mutter is sitting now. That enables us to communicate back and forth during the meeting and make sure that things are being taken care of appropriately and adequately. And it was very rare that I needed to interject with Mr. Hefner and make sure that things were going the way that they needed to. He ran a very good meeting. We could count on him to be stable. He was fact-driven, appreciated that he did not let emotion get into his deliberations. He looked at the facts of the matter, and he was fair in the way he ran the meetings and the decisions that he made. When he signed up for the commission, I think it's fair to say that he did not really know exactly what it was that he was getting into. I know that he was very curious just about things that were going on in the community, and that was one of the driving factors for him to apply. But during his tenure on the commission, we dealt with COVID, which obviously nobody anticipated. As Chair, he dealt with some touchy issues, dealing from cell towers to nursing homes to medical marijuana dispensaries, all things that I think are new to most people as they come to the commission and deal with them in the community. Again, I would like to just personally extend my thanks to him for his service. I'd like to throw out a little bit of a plug. We still have a vacant seat on the commission for those who may be interested in filling or at least attempting to fill his shoes. So, that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you for presentation of a certificate.
I appreciate that, Rob. If you come up front, please. And thank you. Right there's fine. And I want to thank you, and I'm sure maybe some other comments, but I want to thank you too for your professionalism as being Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I know, you know, it seems like it's always your fault, it's always your fault, and I understand that. Like, like Justin said, most of us up here have been on planning and zoning. So, I appreciate it. I hate to see you leave, as well as Justin and the rest of the Planning and Zoning Commission, but this is to certify that Rob Hefner is hereby awarded a certificate of appreciation from the Sholo City Council for his outstanding service to the citizens of Sholo as a Planning and Zoning Commission member from April 2019 to July 2020 on this 16th day of August 2022. Rob, thank you very much. I appreciate your, your hard work and your dedication to our citizens and our community.
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you, sir.
You don't want to say anything? Are you kidding me? Wait a minute.
Having a podium before and a gavel, it's, you know, take control.
Right.
It's been my pleasure and my honor to serve City of Sholo citizens. And of course, you serve at the, I'm Planning and Zoning, you serve the city council. So hopefully with education moving forward, I'm going to try to deliver that both for the town of Pineapple Lake City and actually for the City of Sholo people's understanding of how planning and zoning work, how it interfaces, and what staff does, really. The unsung hero is staff. They do a phenomenal job. They make it very easy to be able to deal with facts and not deal with emotion. So, while he said it was fact-driven, he provided me the facts, it was easy to deal with. So Director Trias is a phenomenal director, and we're honored as a city to have him. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Rob.
Any comments? While we go on to the next item. Again.
Congratulations.
Again, Rob, thank you, man. I appreciate it very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is consent calendar. We'll consider creation of a non-commercial ground lease with Iceland LLC. Mr. Trias, thank you very much for coming in tonight. I appreciate it. Consideration of non-commercial ground lease with Kelly McBride. Consideration of acceptance of West McNeil Fourth Avenue to Eighth Avenue sewer replacement. Consideration of contribution to the Sholo Historical Society for museum roof replacement. And consideration of the minutes of the Sholo City Council meeting, August 2nd, 2022. Is there anything that anybody wants to pull off that or discuss? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar as read. Got a motion by the Vice Mayor. I need a second.
A second.
Got a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Same sign. Pass unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda under new business is consideration of resolution number R 202217 declaring the adoption, the results of the primary election held on August 2nd, 2022. Ms. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Resolution number R 2022-17 outlines the unofficial results of the City of Sholo's primary election held on August 2nd, 2022. The ballot included three council seats. To win in the primary election, a candidate must have received a majority of the valid votes cast for the office of the City Council. Based on complete unofficial results, the number of the votes required to be declared elected was 1,045 votes for the City Council. There were four candidates for the three council seats. Incumbents Mike Alsop, Brent Clark, Brent Hatch, and newcomer Jody Whitehead. Results showed that candidate Mike Alsop received 1,773 votes, Brent Clark received 1,624 votes, Brent Hatch received 1,497 votes, and Jody Whitehead received 1,372 votes. Mike Alsop, Brent Clark, and Brent Hatch each received more than the 1,045 votes needed and will be declared elected to the City Council. Approving resolution number R 2022-17 will declare the election results to be the official canvas with Mike Alsop, Brent Clark, and Brent Hatch filling the three council seats respectively. The three council members will be sworn in at the December 6th, 2022 council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Appreciate that. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the election results as being read.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion? I need a second. I'll second it. Got a second. All those in favor?
Need to read the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a...
I move to adopt, I move to adopt resolution number R 2022-17 declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August 2nd, 2022.
Now I have a motion. It's been a while since I ran a meeting. I need a second on the motion. I got a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consideration of appointment of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee member, Mrs. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Due to the resignation of Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee Member Sally Williams, there was a vacancy on the committee with the term expiring March 2023. Staff advertised the vacancy and received one application from Joel Weeks. Staff recommends appointing Joel Weeks to the Sholo Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for a term expiring March 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd vote to accept that. It was my voice. I'm sorry.
A motion to accept Joel Weeks, or appoint Joel Weeks to the Parks and Rec. Thank you. I need a second.
Can we make Joel show up and tell us why he should be on there?
We don't have that much time. I got a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Joel, for throwing your name out there. Appreciate that. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of award of construction contract for East Union Sidewalk and Drainage Improvement, City of Sholo Project Number R 4022, and authorize of associated budget transfers. Ms. Hall.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Ms. Hall, sorry.
The city's fiscal year 2022 capital improvements program budget includes $347,000 for a sidewalk and drainage replacement project labeled East Union Sidewalk. Portion of this funding, about $220,000, is a CDBG or Community Development Block grant that has been allocated to the sidewalk replacement project to help redevelop downtown Sholo. The scope of work includes installing curb, gutter, havers, six-foot sidewalk, Americans with Disabilities, ADA ramps, driveways, conduits for future decorative lighting and future landscaping, and required drainage improvements needed along East Union between 11th Street to Wyman Road. The project was designed by a city engineering staff with a construction estimate of 396,000. The project was publicly bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Nav Apache Construction LLC at 573,650, and Rowan Espositi Contracting at 649,680. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract for the East Union Sidewalk and Drainage Improvements to your Sholo Project R 4022, or the CDBG Project 102-22, to the Nav Apache Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed the 573,650, and authorize the associated budget transfers. The bid tabulation for all the work is attached. I'm available for questions.
Any questions from the council? Not, I'll look for a motion. Councilman Alsop.
I move to award construction contract for the East Union Sidewalk and Drainage Improvements, City of Sholo Project Number R 4022, CBG Number 102-22, to Nav Apache Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed 573,650, and authorize the associated budget transfer.
Thank you. I got a motion. I need a second. Seconded by Councilman Jed. Any other questions or comments? I got a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consideration of award to construction contract for Sholo Senior Center Floor and Foundation Repair, City of Sholo Project Number FM 0723. Ms. Hall.
City owns and maintains the Sholo Senior Center Building located at 301 East McNeil in Sholo. There's been ongoing issues with the concrete slab floor in the building. Due to seasonal soil expansion and contraction, the floor has developed a severe crack, and this has caused the floor to develop a vertical displacement of over two inches. This is a public area and has become a safety hazard. In July 2022, the city advertised a request for proposals for the needed repairs. Several companies were also contacted by staff. Two companies attended the pre-proposal meeting with the subsequent, excuse me, subsequent site physics, excuse me. The companies were given the opportunity to inspect the affected areas in the building. One proposal was received from Apex Pressure Grounding Incorporated, and this proposal contained a detailed scope of work along with pricing. Now, the cost was $57,825 and is within the range that was expected for the proposed scope of work. Staff recommends awarding a construction contract with Apex Pressure Ground Incorporated for the Sholo Senior Center Floor and Foundation Repair, City of Sholo Project Number FM 0723, in an amount not to exceed that $57,825. Their grounding proposal and scope is attached, Apex is, and I'm available for your question.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Any questions or comments? Councilman Alsop.
Thank you. Just a few things on this. I'm hoping that this is what will hopefully fix this. I know we've been working on this thing for about eight or 10 years and different aspects of it, cracked ceilings, cracked walls, foundations. We fixed it, and then, so I'm hoping that this will be our fix for this building. It's something that we need to fix and that we need to maintain, we need to keep it up, so we can have a place for our seniors to be at and where we can serve them food and also enjoy their time. So, I'm hoping and praying that this is one that fixes it all. So, thank you for your, for staff for putting this together.
And just to add to that, I know we've been, I've been down there a few times in the last year or so and through the kitchen, and it looks like the building's in good shape, except for that one spot, we think. So, and I think the people that even looked at it even complimented that same, that same statement. So, I'll entertain a motion. Our Vice Mayor.
I move to award the construction contract for Sholo Senior Center Floor and Foundation Repair, City of Sholo Project Number FM-0723 to Apex Pressure Grounding Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $57,825.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor. I got a motion. I need a second.
A second.
Seconded by Councilman Clark. All those in favor? All those opposed? Same sign. Motion passed. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Next item on the agenda, consideration of acceptance of South Apron Rehabilitation Project and approval of oil cost escalation request. What is that word?
Eject.
Why doesn't it say that?
Fancy word for inflation.
Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In March of 2021, Armstrong Consultants advertised a request for proposals for construction services for the South Apron Rehabilitation Project at the Sholo Regional Airport. A bid opening was held on March 31st, 2021, at which 0.3 bids were received. On April 20th, 2021, the city council approved the grant application and recommendation to the Federal Aviation Administration, or FAA, awarding the construction contract for the South Apron Rehabilitation Project for Sholo Construction, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $950,418.24. The FAA accepted the city's recommendation and awarded the contract and funded the grant. The city has received the grant in the amount of $960,907.54, which was 100% of the airport improvement program eligible portion of the project, to include the additional costs of engineering services, construction administration, and sponsor administration. Typically, the city would be required to match 2.5% of the grant funds, but due to the COVID-19 pandemic, FAA required no match, saving the city $24,022.67. Total project cost was $1,164,579.54. The city's non-AIP eligible portion of total project was $203,672. The project was completed ahead of schedule on June 27th, 2022, on budget with no change orders, and the final inspection was completed on July 27th, 2022 with no deficiencies. Due to the unprecedented rise in the cost of oil between March 2021 and June 2022, the contractor incurred additional costs for material amounting to $34,186. The cost per ton increased from $399 to $650 per ton, an increase of $251 per ton. 135 tons of oil was purchased for this project, and though prices do commonly fluctuate, this amount exceeded what could have been reasonably anticipated. As such, Sholo Construction, Inc. has requested that the city pay the additional costs, and staff is recommending that the costs be split 50/50. Staff recommends accepting the South Apron Rehabilitation Project and approving the cost escalation request in the amount of $18,487.78, and I'm available for your question.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor. So, is Sholo Construction agreeable to splitting it 50/50, or would they like us to pay the entire amount?
They'd like us, they'd like for us to pay the entire amount, but we had a meeting with them recently, and, and we thought it would be fair to split, to split the escalation costs.
And they'll accept that?
I talked to Sholo Construction, and although they'd like the full amount, they will accept the half of it. What it is, is half of it plus the sales taxes, because the sales tax wasn't including the original amount.
Any other questions or comments? Not, I'll look for a motion.
I'll move to accept the South Apron Rehabilitation Project at the Sholo Regional Airport and to approve of the oil cost escalation requested by Sholo Construction Incorporated in the amount of $18,487.78. Approving any associated budget transfers and authorize the mayor to sign any associated documents.
Got a motion. I'll second it. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I know we, none of us like prices to go up, but this was something that, as we know what oil's doing. I wish somebody had split the cost with me to pay for my fuel in my truck.
Make a motion?
Don't put that on his emotion. I'll be on the front page again. Okay, next item on the agenda, summary of current events. Councilman Clark.
Sorry, I need to compose myself. I just want to thank the board for the Sholo Youth Foundation. This last weekend, we had a, an event that happened over in the Frontier Fields. Many people might have wondered what that big giant circus tent was. It was not Barnum and Bailey Circus coming to town. It was, it was a community coming together for the youth of the citizens, or for the youth of Sholo. I think we had almost 500 people that were in attendance at that event. A lot of community members donated a lot of money, but a lot of the board members, what people don't see is they, they sacrifice a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of energy and a lot of heartache. And there's a lot of frustration and a lot of that kind of stuff that, that I could see. I just, I kind of do a very small ancillary part of it. And, but I could see it on their faces, and the reason why they continue to do it for almost 20 years now, I think it's been 19 years that they've been in operation. It's for the citizens' kids, and so it's a, it's a great, great organization. Our city manager, our city attorney, our deputy city clerk, they put in countless hours to make that happen. I know the mayor, he does a great job providing the food for it. It's just really a cool event for everybody to come together, all, you know, we kind of joke sometimes about, well, it's for the kids, it's for the kids, and this truly is for the kids, and it's for, for our, our citizens to come together was really a remarkable event. You know, last year, I think we had 370 or 380, and they got a bigger tent this year, and we, and we still sold out. It's like you could put five of those tents over there, and I think that we would still sell out because the citizens want to come and do what's right for the kids. So, I want to thank you guys for doing that.
Councilman Alsop.
Yeah, I just wanted to dittle what Councilman Clark said about the, what the staff does all that, but also I want to thank Councilman Clark. It's always been a privilege and an honor when you ask me to pray before that at the Youth Foundation. It's, it's, it's something that dear to my heart, and just to have the privilege of you asking me to do that was, I'm totally grateful. I haven't had the privilege to pray at the council meetings or say the pledge for probably over a year, so I'm hoping one of these days I'll be able to say that in here too, but thank you very much for your help.
Any other council member? Real quick, I just have to say, I, I love doing that event, you know, it's, we serve a lot of plates. It's a great time. We love being outside, so I've been involved the last couple of years and looking forward to continue doing that. So, I appreciate it. And there's, real quick, you know, Mr. Trias made a comment about some openings on the P&amp;Z, and I just want to tell people that are out there that may be watching to want to get involved in the city. P&amp;Z is a great place to start. I know there's still an opening out on that. I, I think it's going to open up again. So, if you want to get involved, I would highly recommend to get on the P&amp;Z or put your name, application in for P&amp;Zs. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. This, on Saturday, August 27th, we'll, we'll have the Residential Electronic Waste Collection Event again, and also used tires 8 to 11 a.m. at the Navajo County Penrod Facility, 251 North Penrod Road. You can drop off unused and unwanted computer equipment, accessories, small appliances, electronic equipment, and used tires without the rims for free. Each resident's only allowed to drop off one CRT style TV, and the commercial businesses are not, will not be accepted at this event. It's for residential use only. If you need more information on that event, you can get ahold of Steve North at 532-4124. Sholo Main Street's Battle, the Bands and Bands will be held Saturday, September 3rd. That's actually before our next council meeting. From 12 to 8, 12 at noon until 9 p.m. at Frontier Film. The music and food competition features bands and food trucks competing for prize money and trophies, and admission is $5. Children ages 12 and under are free with a paid adult, and each admission comes with five tokens to vote for your favorite band or food truck. And more information on that event, you can contact Sholo Main Street at sholomainstreet.org. And as you know, we have a number of public works projects throughout the city. Contractors pulverizing 4th, 5th, 6th, and 8th Drive on the Citywide Paving Sidewalk Connectivity Project, and they're scheduled to be paved next week, and sidewalk will begin on Cooley in a, in a couple of weeks. Roadwork continues on McNeil Acres, and the contractors working down Reed Head with the sewer line, and then they'll pave that before they move to Stratton. They're also, this week, they're going to start working on the wall at Frontier Park Playground, and that equipment for the playground's tentatively scheduled in the first part of September. So, we hope that, that's a long time coming on that playground, and we're hoping that we can keep the schedule on that. It's been a issue with, a supply chain issue on most of the items over there. As always, we appreciate the, our citizens' patience. We have a lot of projects going throughout town and more on the way. Thank you.
Appreciate that. City Manager, anybody need seconds? Schedule of meetings.
We tentatively have, tentatively have scheduled the Student Council Day for September 2nd, or September 6th, and that'll be your next council meeting. That's when the students from the Sholo High School Student Council participate with the staff in, in the morning, and, and then they go out and job shadow some of the different jobs within the city, and then they'll join the council that evening and shadow the council members and help you out with the council meeting. They also have a report on that, what they've learned at the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Council. They also have a report on that, what they've learned at the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Conference. There will be four of them attending that conference. And then one other scheduling meeting is, just to mark your calendars, October 19th will be our annual retreat. We'll be at the Darren Reed Conference Room at the Public Safety Building.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay, next item on the agenda is, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session where we'll get legal advice from our city attorney. I got a motion by the vice mayor. I need a second.
A second.
Second by Councilman Clark. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Go on, executive session. Thank you, guys. It's been seeing you.